Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, June 8th, 2022. All council meetings will be live streamed on the city's website. Our first order of business is roll call. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Mr. Coghill. Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Cal Smith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
That's only four members.
Bruce didn't say anything.
Call him again.
Mr. Kraus.
The cat probably walking across the screen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I am here.
Thank you.
Five members present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, so we do have quorum, so we can begin. Our next order of business is public comment. And I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before City Council, and profanity will not be permitted. After you recall, please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Let the record reflect that we have also been joined by Councilman Burgess. Our first registered speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Good morning. Shady trees, not shady beetles in Von Air. Reapportionment and creating a dead end on Matthew Avenue are harmful to Von Air. We disagree with both of these things. It has been voiced by many of us. We, the people of Von Air, are best served by remaining in District Four. I'm going to read the letter that was read at my husband's funeral from the Pittsburgh Veterans Firefighters Association authored by Battalion Chief Douglas Krastovich. Retired Deputy Chief Mike Mullen touched the lives of many people. His uncompromising dedication to his sworn duty to provide for the safety of the citizens of Pittsburgh was truly exceptional and one that should be emulated by every firefighter. He loves sharing his knowledge of firefighting and all its many aspects to make our firefighters safer, smarter, and more efficient on the fire ground. Mike knew most of the firefighters on the entire Pittsburgh Bureau of Fire by their first name and was always approachable regardless of rank. If he had a question, he would stop what he was doing to answer it. He worked tirelessly but also energetically his entire career in pursuit of more knowledge. His legacy will serve our citizens and firefighters for years to come. Mike was a loving and compassionate husband, father, brother, relative, and friend. Michael J. Mullen lived a full life as his obituaries so accurately described. Mike was passionate, tireless, dedicated, highly conscientious, and caring. Well done, Michael. Well done. Rest in peace, my friend. You have all sworn an oath to uphold the U.S. Constitution and Pennsylvania Constitution. City Council, are you for the people of Von Air or against the property owners? Do you stand with Mayor Ganim, State Representative Benham, and Councilman Coghill for the creation of a green space to replace the detrimental school building? The Michael Mullen Green Space is for all ages and stages of people. Shady trees, not shady beetles in Von Air. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Beltsilver, Taipei, Taiwan, also. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for President 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org. I taught family very frequently at the University of Pittsburgh in the past. Global Intelligence fuses optimal info intel from 21 primary disciplines. That's why I'm a member. I have secured memberships in more than 30 of these disciplines, so we have current information coming in. And that is to solve problems. June 2022, Week Two, GIS Asian Intelligence Week. We're focused on Taiwan. Taiwanese are in the top five. If you pay attention to IQ, they're in the top five nationally. The Thai pre-university educational system is within the top five in the world, and of course, many of you are aware that Taiwan is the world's number-one producer of microprocessors. As a U.S. citizen, as I have in the past, I encourage Thai to come here for many reasons, among them being security. It's kind of the United States, to come to Pittsburgh and bring your families. A concern of this council is clearly family and the child. I'm going to quote a public comment that I made, 22 September 2015, wherein I offered a GIS solution to protect our children. There were no counselors who responded. At the core of my public efforts is the child in Pittsburgh, the United States, and the world. There's no one place in the city of Pittsburgh where children can go, ages five to 15 at least, to be safe. So I proposed creating a system of what I call kid globes in the nine districts of Pittsburgh. Three-dimensional ultra-advanced material spheres, 100 meters in diameter, resistant to biological, chemical, physical toxins, and bullets, to be places of refuge and botegas of education. All kid globes or spheres as a system would be administered out of the office of mayor and supervised out of each district because there'd be at least one in each district. And each kid globe would be completely lowerable for defense into the ground and the top half completely retractable. Each kid globe would initially accommodate 250 kids and their parents or guardians and staff, at least 20. The kids most desperate in our city would be able to enter alone. That's my view. Kids may come to the globe for refuge from sexual predation, violence, to escape gender persecution. We want this for the state and we want this for the country using what I'll call kidnet.
Our next registered speaker is Millie Sasse.
My name is Millie Sasse. I've been a resident of Oak Cliff for more than 40 years. Please reject ordinance 2021-1906. I was intrigued by the discussion the council had yesterday in relation to land use and protection, personal property rights. There was some part of that discussion that alluded to living in historic houses and the need to have a stronger say about the neighborhood than those who come in from the outside and want to tell a neighbor. I would like to use some of that argument to say that I believe that my Oak Cliff community with its historic homes and famous residents such as John Kane, some of Andy Warhol's family, John Dorsey, the grandson of the first African-American physician in Pittsburgh, and even Dan Marino's cousins, deserves a stronger voice in what happens in our community than Walnut Capital and its attorney. The Walnut Capital principals have stated they live just two miles from the site they want to develop. Their intent is to convince somebody that they have only the best entrance at Oakland in mind. Not true. The properties they plan to develop belongs to Pitt New PMC. The board of New PMC do not live in Oakland. Moreover, the Walnut Capital attorney, who does not live in Oakland, met with representatives from council over five days wherein he drafted revisions to the very first version of 1906 that was presented to you. We know this is true since we saw his name all over the document that was posted. Following that, we were told that no more substantive changes could be made. However, we have now seen version three of 1906 being trotted out with substantive changes, to quote one of the members of the Planning Commission. Does this not give you pause and convince you that the neighbors have been left out in spite of the fact that it is our neighborhood that will be dramatically affected? We brought our 3D-printed model of the proposed Walnut Capital development into council on 25 May for the public hearing about 1906. Thanks to those of you who looked at it. We tried to show some of the impact that this will have in South Oakland and show building dimensions that the proposed zoning will permit. But besides the height and length of buildings, there are other issues such as lighting and signage that have been hard to figure out, and we get no answers except to read the legislation. There has never been a true back-and-forth communication about 1906, even though we'll have enormous and detrimental factors permitted as the legislation now stands. Even our 3D model cannot be shown to all members of the council or even to Mayor Gani's office. There is no mechanism for that to happen. And some specifics about 1906. The affordable housing that Walnut Capital has agreed to depends upon vouchers being available and not already used up, so there's no guarantee. It also appears that inclusionary zoning legislation is being held up by a court case, so Walnut Capital reading to abide by ICEE may mean nothing at all, no guarantee. And there are other places in the zoning legislation where it appears that the zoning administrator can eliminate requirement of the developer compliance if they say they cannot do portions of the project within the zoning requirements. So there's no guarantee of compliance. This is bad legislation and bad process. Please do not pass 2021-1906. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elena Zaitsov.
I am Elena Zaitsov. I've lived in South Oakland for 42 years. I'm here today to talk about ordinance 2021-1906, the Walnut Capital rezoning of part of Oakland. As we have learned the hard way about zoning in Oakland, what could be built with this rezoning has to be considered, not the pretty pictures we are shown. The Planning Commission recommended that additional section drawings be given to you so you could see the impact on residential areas. Since they never materialized, I would like to invite you to Oak Cliff for the ribbon cutting of our new playground. It is tomorrow at 3:30. Oak Cliff is thankful that City Council members voted to permit us to rename that playground. A visit to Oak Cliff will give you some context for this rezoning as the playground is very near the Isley site. Part of the Isley site is proposed to have maximum height of 85 feet and the other part at 185 feet. McGee Hospital is just five stories, making its height about 75 feet. The condos nearby are two stories. 185 feet height does not belong. Moving across the boulevard of the Allies to the Panera Quality Inn site, it can also have maximum height of 85 feet. With a build-to line of zero, this part of the boulevard is going to be a canyon. 20, 20 perfectly good houses on Halke Street will be torn down. Halke Street from Panera to Louisa Street also has a max of 185 feet. 40-foot-high Coltard houses are behind these. This is the start of making Coltard a canyon. The section of Halke needs to be 85 feet for the same reason the Isley site in front of the Niagara condo stories, the Niagara two-story condos is 85 feet. The rest of Halke has a max of 120 feet. With Coltard houses behind it, it also needs to have its max lower to 85 feet. With McGee Hospital at 75 feet, there is no context for 120 feet or 185 feet high buildings. Developers will build to the max dimensions allowed. Imagine a height of 185 feet, more than double the height of McGee Hospital, and make it 400 feet long. That mass does not belong next to Coltard Street or adjacent to residential Oak Cliff. The argument that 400 feet is needed for trucks to unload inside a grocery is not supported by other grocery stores in the area. There's no requirement a grocery will even be built. It seems that justification was needed, and knowing a grocery store appealed to residents, it became the reason for 400 feet. Even if it was desired for the grocery, allowing it in zoning for all buildings is irresponsible. Other processes can be used for that one application. Please consider the people who live in Oakland and vote against the Walnut Capital rezoning of Oakland. I hope to meet all of you tomorrow at the Oak Cliff Community Playground ribbon cutting at Craft Avenue and Niagara Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chris Fritz. So, Mr. Fritz, apparently you have an older version of Zoom, so we're not going to be able to get to you today, which means our next speaker is Liz Reed. And while we wait on Ms. Reed to come off of mute, Mr. Fritz, you can also send your...
Here I am. Chris is actually my husband, and he's just on another device in the basement, and he's unable to unmute. He will come on this device after, or he could come speak now if he should go first.
You can continue, Ms. Reed, and then we can take Mr. Fritz.
All right. So my name is Liz Reed. I live in Stanton Heights. Chris is my husband. He's a recycling loader in the Division of Environmental Services in the Department of Public Works. He started this job in February 2021 and has received outstanding reviews from his supervisor. On April 6th, he sustained a work-related injury, thought it would go away, just tried to take it easy, but was still working. At that time, used medical marijuana he had previously purchased as an MMJ patient in PA, but that, because he wasn't a heavy user, that he let his membership lapse, or whatever it's called, the card lapse. He reported the injury on April 12th. He was put on leave. He did the required drug test, went to physical therapy, and the issue resolved. Went back to work May 3rd and 4th, worked both days. Then on Friday, May 5th, went to work and received a suspension letter saying he had violated the city's drug policy. At that time, he was instructed to write an appeal letter asking for his job back. He wrote the letter and then was offered what's called a "last chance agreement," which required a track-free recovery program to be followed. So basically, he's required to attend intensive outpatient drug treatment and pledged not to use any drugs or alcohol, including medical marijuana, for one year. He obviously, if this was his only option versus losing his job, he couldn't turn that down because our family is dependent on the city health insurance. So he is now in intensive outpatient treatment for occasional medical marijuana use. The city's, the policy also that he agreed to states, quote, "The unlawful manufacture, distribution, dispensing, possession, or use of a controlled substance while on city property or while conducting city business is strictly prohibited." He was not in violation of the policy. It's also worth noting, this policy was last updated in 2015, one year before the state's medical marijuana program was implemented. So our concerns are several. One, environmental services is severely understaffed. He can and should be working and wants to be working. He's taking up a seat in an intensive outpatient program 28 hours a week with people who have serious substance use disorders. We all know how much these services are needed in this region. Somebody who actually needs these services should be there and not him. City drug policy should be updated to reflect the 2016 changes to the state's stance on medical marijuana and...
Thank you very much. So our last registered speaker will be Mr. Chris Fritz.
All right, thanks. I'm a garbage man for the city. I don't have a CDL. As a refused loader, I'm not required by the city to have a CDL license, but because of the policy, the, um, the drug policy is, it covers my job as well. I was not clear on that policy when I took the job with the city. Otherwise, I obviously would have tried to find an alternative for the medical marijuana that I use for chronic pain, including migraines and sciatica pain that I've had for almost a decade. I'm sorry to hear that the city hasn't updated their drug policy since 2015. That was the year before the governor signed in the medical marijuana policy for the state. I would like to go back to work. I want to be a garbage man for the city, continue my employment, and I'm really frustrated because I want to provide for the city. I want to provide for my family, and for some reason, I'm not able to do that because of outdated city policy. Thank you for your time. I appreciate you listening to my concerns, and I look forward to the city updating their policy as it reflects state legal medical marijuana use and also some, um, some issues for the new job descriptions that they have. If you, if you create a new job that has different requirements, the job should reflect, um, reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do thank you for your service to the city. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone with us in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, state your name and neighborhood for the record. You'll also be given three minutes.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Mr. O'Connor, please come sit at your desk, sit at the seat, not sitting over here talking. This is what we have to put in. You, as a lawyer, you should be telling them. This is for your information-only citizens. As I passed the restaurant on Smithfield Street, I seen this sign. It says, Father Gani, Shelter for the Homeless, 414 Grant Street, Pittsburgh, PA 15219. The phone number, they says, call 412-2552. You know, that's the mayor's number, 2552626. It says, "Our counselors," that's what begins, I guess, "are standing by and ready to help you. If you're homeless, unsheltered, or have no place to go, and you're in Pittsburgh, come, come, Father, come to Father Gani's. Set up your tent, your tarp, your grates, your blankets, or whatever makeshift shelter you have. This space is in front and in the back of the building to keep you dry and out of the elements during inclement weather. You are welcome here. No one will judge you, make you move, harass you. You are all God's children, and there's a safe place. No one will be turned away." Now, when I seen this, I know I walked past, and this is, looked to me like a black priest. And I said, "Who is that?" Then I seen, "That's, that's our mayor." Okay, so when I go in the restaurant and ask, "I had, get a copy of this," he said, "I could take it." But as I'm going to take it off, I hear the citizens, people in the restaurant speaking about, "Andy Sheen is down there questioning, what did the mayor do, Mayor Perdudo, do with the homeless, the money for the homeless?" He says, "Andy Sheen is questioning people." Okay, so then he tells me, he has said something about a lawyer, and they tell me that, "You call this number up here, and they'll tell you." And I went back to him. I said, "Sir, that's the mayor's office." He was telling me, he said, "A lawyer wrote this paper." That's what he was telling me, not that this was a lawyer, I mean, that this is the number you should call. I'm bringing this to your attention because yesterday, and to you, Mr. Burgess, I want you to explain to me, where's the documented proof that what I said was not true, that the citizens that are in our jail are getting feces in your food, and the one had a part of a dead bird in there. You said that I was, that what I said was not right. I want to know you, to you, your program in there. Did you go in line with the prisoners and eat the food that they eat? I'm not talking about getting one from the back. Well, they might have changed, because this is this year, 2022, that they said that this...
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else with us in chambers wishing to speak? Seeing no one, that moves us to our Standing Committees' agenda. We have our deputy mayor with us this morning, so I'm gonna go a little out of order. Feel free to come to the table. I'm gonna move to page seven and take the recommitted papers. If the clerk will please read Bill 377 and 398. They're both, they're companion pieces. If you read those together.
Bill 377, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2019 Capitol Budget and the 2019 CDBG Program. The 2019 through 2024 Capitol Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Training Facility by $808,090 and Increasing Major Developments by $808,090. Bill Number 398, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 840, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2020 Capitol Budget and the 2020 CDBG Program and the 2020 through 2025 Capitol Improvement Program by Reducing Public Safety Training Facilities by $191,910 and Increasing Major Developments by $191,910.
Need a motion? With discussion? Because I do know Councilman Kraus wanted to have discussion. You want to begin, Councilman Kraus? You're on mute, Councilman.
I'm sorry. If Councilman Kraus is okay with that, thank you.
Yes, I am, Councilman. Please continue.
Thank you. Director Pollock, good morning. How are you? Thank you for being here. I appreciate your, your willingness to engage council on the topic.
Absolutely. Happy to. Jake Pollock, Director, Office of Management and Budget.
Thanks, appreciate it. I wish I could be there. This is a very important bill, as are all. I have some workers here at the house, and I need to be here. And so I apologize and appreciate your indulgence. So just for the edification of anybody who might be watching and for members that might not be aware, Director Pollock and I met about a week before the bill came up for consideration, excuse me, last week, and had a very honest, open conversation about the training facility, where we are, and what the possibilities are of actually getting the, the project started, okay? And so the monies, as I understand it, Director, just for the edification of everybody here in the conversation, the monies in the two bills of 377 and 398 are dollars that were allocated to the public safety training facility project, sort of as starter funds. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but sort of starter funds to sort of kickstart the, the project. Do I have that about right?
Generally speaking, yes. I was not in the Office of Management and Budget at the time, so I don't know the exact intent or what was viewed as the deliverable for that phase of the project at the time. But it's correct to say that these were the early funds necessary to initiate a project, but, you know, it's a very large site and would be a much larger project, price tag all included, and would require further appropriation down the line. That's definitely true.
Excuse me. Thank you, Director. And so the, I guess, I mean, it's no secret that I'm concerned about taking funds away from the training facility, given the, the situation of public safety, you know, very broad statement, but across the board, not just here in Pittsburgh, but, you know, we read in the news every day. Every city is grappling with, with their public safety departments and to be able to deliver services that constituency clearly are entitled to. So I appreciate that we may not be ready to launch the, no, we may not be ready to put shovels in the ground, per se, on the project. But am I mistaken to think that the, what amounts to about $1 million could be used to do things like a demo on, on buildings on the site that will ultimately need to come down? Could we do asbestos and lead remediation in buildings that we are going to keep? How about core sampling comes to mind? If we are certainly going to be obligated at some point in time to do some core sampling on the site, would that, would these funds be appropriate for that? Engineering, engineer drawings, those kinds of things? Would, it seems to me, this money could be used as kindling to start the fire. But I know we're not at this phase where we have a raging fire, but we need to start it. And so I'm worried that if we subtract these funds from the project, we may never have another opportunity to sort of, you know, another piece of flint to kickstart that project, and it could fall by the wayside. So with that, Director, thank you. I'll turn it, oh, and one other thing. In the process of this, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we still pay a lease to CCAC for use of their campus for a training facility. So there's, there's still money going out in rent that we need to account for as well. But with that, I will stop, Director. Oh, one last thing. I apologize. Oh, one last thing, I apologize. The, I know the funds want to be reallocated to the Penn Circle Two Way Conversion Project. If I understand the, our, our financial state of affairs so far, there was a approximately a 2.2.8 million dollar allocation out of ARPA funds for that project. So are these, are we coming up short by a million on the project? And that's why the idea to subtract these funds and add to it are, are being put on the table. I know that's a lot. I apologize. And I'll be happy to revisit any questions you might have as you give your comments.
Sure. Thank you, Councilman. I'll, I'll answer the last question first. And the, the answer there is that you are correct. As with many of our capital projects, and the city government is by no means alone in this this year as a result of inflation and price escalation in building materials. That is particularly significant in paving projects that rely on asphalt, which is obviously produced from petroleum, and that market is particularly volatile at the moment. Many projects of this type are seeing significant cost overruns, and this is one of them. So the project is going to cost a little over than a million dollars, more than was originally budgeted, and that is the reason that we're pursuing this transfer. It is a, the Penn Circle project is a completely shovel-ready project that could begin, you know, within a month or so, if fully appropriated to. And in fact, we are on a bit of a ticking clock, if you will, on the expiration of the pricing for the materials that we have now, meaning that if we don't move quickly, the cost overruns will only increase and imperil our ability to deliver that project this year, which we otherwise would be able to do with these funds. So that was the rationale behind making a move of funds into this project to cover the unanticipated cost overage from inflation and ensure that that project was completed this year. To your broader set of questions about the public safety training facility, in a general sense, all or at least most of the activities that you described could be conducted with capital budget dollars. But again, I'll just say that, that we are not in a position on that project to get any, even any of those activities under contract this year for a variety of reasons. You know, we are not yet sure, because we don't have even conceptual designs, what buildings should be investigated for being retained versus demolished. So we would be getting ahead of ourselves, frankly, in demolishing some. I know that was just an example you gave, but I'm just sort of illustrating the point that we, we are, we are simply not going to be in a position to get any dollars under contract here this year. And so, given that we, in comparison to that, have a shovel-ready project that is just in need of a small infusion of money to, to be completed, we felt that was a prudent step to, to bring the council for consideration. I'll also note very quickly that these are 2019 and 2020 bond funds. And we have some obligations to the federal government, particularly the IRS, to spend bond funds in a timely manner. So we are reaching sort of the end of that countdown clock with these dollars as well. So it would be more appropriate, in my view, from a fiduciary standpoint, from our, the point of view of our collective fiduciary responsibility to the city, to move these funds and spend them this year on a worthy project, and then to allocate new funds in a future budget year to the public safety facility so as to be using fresher, if you will, bond money for that purpose, rather than allowing it to continue to sit in the bank account. So those are all the reasons that we proposed this, this switch. I'll, I'll reiterate a point I made at last week's meeting. It is not and should not be perceived as a step away from the facility. We, we very much need a new public safety training facility. Some of the existing facilities along Washington Boulevard need to be relocated, both because they're old and because, well, they need to be replaced because they're old, and they need to be relocated because they're in an active floodplain. And we're not, you know, not in any way suggesting that that situation does not need to be rectified soon. But it is not going to be rectified this year. And in the meantime, we have another project that, that we'd very much like to see completed. That's, that's the long and short of it.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, Director. When I first came on the council, I chaired the Public Safety Committee, and I had the opportunity to actually go to the training facility where I met who was one day to become our commander, Karen Dixon, because the training facility had flooded, and they were in desperate need of some help and some additional equipment, and exercise space that had been damaged by the flooding and so forth and so on. And so that was 15 years ago. And, you know, we still haven't committed fully. Yet, you know, Mayor Paduto used to say budgets are a reflection of our priorities. And actually, I've heard Mayor Gany say exactly that as well, too. And this council believes that as well. And, and, you know, we're, we're just given, all of us, we all of us, you, the mayor, council, are just given the very difficult choice of yes and no. We never get to do maybe. We can only say yes and no. And so you, you brought up that it's an active floodplain there. That worries me. I did have an opportunity to visit the, the shooting range. I know, and I don't want to speak for Councilwoman Gross, and you will correct me, please, if I'm wrong, but I do believe there's a desire to bring that inside once again and not be an outdoor range. I'll stand corrected if that's not true, but.
Councilman, if I may, I.
Yes, yeah, please.
I live in Highland Park, very near the range, and I can confirm that that is the fervent desire of my neighbors who, who never miss an opportunity to remind me of that. And again, I'm sympathetic to, to that, to that desire. I think it is in the long-term interest of the city to make a move like that. So again, the question is, is not whether we believe we need to move in that direction, which I think there is a consensus that we do. It's whether we can make meaningful progress on that in this budget year. So I'm sorry to interrupt.
So Director, can, can you raise my comfort level to agree to do this transfer at this point in time by offering, and I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot by any means, but by offering a, a path by which we can replenish these funds in next year's budget?
The, the path would be to include them in the capital budget proposal. So the, the capital budget process has recently started. In fact, I'll take this opportunity to plug that we have a public meeting this evening on the capital budget for feedback. The, the agenda of this evening's meeting is escaping me, so I can't remember if this is the one where these types of facilities would be discussed. But in any event, the public is invited to weigh in, as are all of you, of course, and stakeholders, on their priorities. And, you know, I, I fully expect the Public Safety Department to submit a budget request for reallocating funds to this facility. Of course, council could, could, any member of council or council collectively could do the same. You know, we will, we anticipate going to the markets for a bond issuance next year to support a robust capital budget in which this could absolutely be included. And again, it is, it is my every intention to put that forward to council for consideration when we deliver the mayor's proposed budget later in the year. So I'm not sure if that answers your question directly, but my.
It does.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. No, it does, Director. I appreciate your, as I said, we are never given the luxury of maybe. It's yes and no, and we just, we have to make difficult decisions here. I, you know, and we as electors, electorates, electeds in the city, it's very common for us to get concerns from constituency around public safety, whether it be police, fire, EMS, animal control. But I have never seen such a heightened desire for, for calm and for, to, to, for the electorate to truly believe in their heart of hearts that, that even though these are terribly difficult times across the nation, that we are fully, and I'm not suggesting we're not, but that we're fully committed to, to the health and safety and welfare and well-being of, of our constituencies. So, you know, I mean, with that, I, I'm wrestling. Oh, let me ask one question, please. And, and again, not to put you on the spot. If you don't have the answer, we can get it later. But do you have a sense of what we are paying in rent at CCAC these days for our training facility?
I don't have that answer off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to follow up with that. Obviously, just to, just to make clear for the purposes of the public, the, the city-owned training facilities in Washington Boulevard, we are not paying rent on those. We, we own those. I will have to double-check on the other component of our training work that, that is in partnership with CCAC.
Right. No, I appreciate, I appreciate, Director. It's a, it's a difficult decision to make, and clearly one we're not taking lightly for the fact that we brought it back for rediscussion at the table. I will be a very, very, oh, one last thing. Exploration of the, of the bond funds that are committed to the project, there is a timeline, correct? Do we, are we, like, within a year of those expiring?
It, it's, it's not a, it's not a definitive. No, no, it's, say, it's, it's not a definitive timeline because we, we can and often do make a rationale, provide a rationale for why a project has not fully expended its funds when we are questioned about this by regulators. It, it just, the, the, as the number of past year and sever, and often, often cases, multi-year past, do bond funds remain in our accounts? We get questions about that, particularly when we pursue new bond funding from the private market. So this is a question that comes up from state and federal regulators when we go through the normal compliance process to issue new bonds. They ask essentially, "Why do you need to issue new debt if you have debt funds available that have not been expended?" And I, I will say that that was a question that was raised to us this year as we prepared to issue the 2022 series. We were able to answer it successfully. But from a debt management point of view, it is a priority of mine to make sure that we are more timely in our expenditure of funds, including in instances like this. If a project is falling behind on its schedule, to reallocate those funds to projects that are ready to go, again, not with the intention of not ultimately completing the original project, but simply to keep our, our cycling of bond funds more current, to, to better comply with IRS guidelines.
We as elected are constantly requested from constituency to add police, you know, at least, let, let me back up on that part. We, we were anyway for the first 13 years that I was on council. It was almost a charge of this council and previous councils that, that we always wanted to populate, maintain a certain number of police officers throughout the city. And then I don't have to, to go into the murder of George Floyd and, and the international outrage and the, and the desire for the world globally to revisit what policing is. And we've had that conversation at length, and many of us have, I think, come to realize there were things we were doing okay. There were things we were doing very well. There were things that clearly, clearly needed to change. But, you know, having come out of that and to, to follow national headlines, like what's happening in Seattle right now, and what many of the, of the citizenry looks like, look at like a, almost a collapse of, of civility, you know, we're, you know, we, we had a great meet, great meeting with the mayor yesterday morning around what's happening on Carson Street. And the, you know, the, the, it looks as though the world has lost its mind, you know? And so we are beginning to hear again the desire to see, you know, police officers, but not just police officers for the sake of police officers, but officers that are trained in the new approach to protecting and serving. I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay away from the terminology of policing and, and use the terminology of protecting and serving. And so it just even further emphasizes the, the need for training, and not, not just for the sake of constituency, but for the officers themselves. You know, I, I see the faces of officers sometime on East Carson Street Quarter, and they just look like, "Oh, my God, what, what am I supposed to do here?" You know, and I feel for them that without, you know, new age, for lack of a better way to say, training of what a, a new police force really looks like, and, and to separate away from the idea of policing people and, and advocating solely for protecting and serving. I just, I've never seen that kind of desire in electorate. And so, you know, that plays into the whole conversation of, "We know we need to put a class on. We, we know we, we need to add additional officers for a number of reasons. We know there's retirements, and we know there are, you know, people that will leave the force. And I know the conversation of how we train people, and then they leave, and all those kinds of things." It's a very, very complex and complicated argument. I do, I don't want to minimize it at all. But, you know, it just, to me, the time calls for, you know, level-headedness and for, for our commitment to, to public safety and to having officers that understand this new way of policing and what it means to go out and actually protect and serve a population and not police a population. So it gives me great pause to, to vote a bill that says, "We're not committed to that." But the bill doesn't say that. I, I, I get that it doesn't say that. But having had this conversation with you, and I honestly do not know the temperature of my colleagues. I have not, I have not polled my colleagues, although clearly, they, they were comfortable enough to vote it in preliminary vote the first time. But, you know, having had this conversation with you and understanding the difficult position that we, we are in all the way around, as long as we will commit to replenishing the funds, and I will be a very strong advocate for that when capital budget comes, to replenish the funds that we are redirecting at this moment in time, you'll have my support on the bill today.
And, Councilman.
And I'll give you opportunity for further comment, Director, if you wish to make it. If not, I'll relinquish the floor to other members.
Just, just to respond in part to, to what you said, I, I want to clarify for everyone's comfort level that this change in no way affects the operational readiness of the Bureau of Police or any of our public safety bureaus, nor our ability to train, because we have existing facilities for those purposes. So I, I understand and take to heart your points about the desire for long-term new facilities, which again, I and the administration share. But I, the, a, a new facility is not going to be completed for some time, regardless, that will be a multi-year process. And in that interim, we, we are not in a deficit in our ability, from an operational point of view, to train officers or, or conduct the normal public safety business to protect and serve, as, as you, you put it. So this is, this is fundamentally a financial and debt management question, not one that has operational consequences for the bureau. And I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of that. But, yeah.
Yeah, nor did I mean to suggest that, Director.
No, I didn't think that you did. I just, I felt, I felt it was worth rounding out the topic.
It is worth rounding out. It is worth reiterating. It, it's, it's almost like technology, you know? The, the second we, we, we buy something, it's already obsolete. We're off to the next new thing. If, if ever there was a time to, to really, really, and not as catchphrase, but to really reimagine what it means to deploy a, a police force and what, what does that look like in this, in, you know, in 2022 and beyond? And, and it's, you know, to go back to the sort of idea of outdated technologies, it's, you know, training facilities are, are, are tools, right? And if, if we're not providing our public safety officials with the right tools needed to, you know, to enter this new arena that we all agree we need to, to enter, then, then we're doing them a great disservice. And I, you know, I don't want it to, to go out there as though we just want to create a training facility because we want to create a training facility. It's imperative to have the proper tools to train a public safety force adequately and properly. And I just, you know, I'm, I'm just, we all are very dedicated to that. And again, I'll hearken back to the difficult decisions we need to make. I really, really appreciate your time, Director. It's always a pleasure to engage with you. And again, I don't know the temperature of my colleagues, but you will have my support on the bill today. And I will be a very strong advocate to replenish the funds in the capital, in the capital budget that is coming before us rather soon. So thank you, Director, very much. And Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I personally have no problem recommitting these funds, so I don't, I don't have the misgivings that Mr. Kraus has. And we did talk about it over the weekend. I do appreciate him giving me a call. I think Director Pollak has, has reiterated that these are bond funds that need to move quickly, and so there are appropriate use for these funds. I support the Penn Circle conversion. It has already supported a few hundred units. It has already supported a few hundred units of affordable housing, I think, as part of the kind of long-term redevelopment in East Liberty. And I want to note for the record, what I think Mr. Kraus and Mr. Pollak just wrapped up on, which is that there's no immediate operational impact to moving these funds, right? It is not going to make policing better, it's not going to make policing worse, it's, there's nothing immediate that is going to be happening with the public training safety facility. We do lease not only at CCAC, but we also just leased on Summer One Boulevard an additional facility. I kind of can't keep current in my mind which functions are happening in which places. I absolutely do support, for the record, moving the firing range to an indoor facility. And at this table, fairly recently, because I was still in this assigned seat, I asked if it could be moved to the new facility on Summer One Boulevard and was told no, but I will continue to ask because it seems like that is a large facility that maybe perhaps could accommodate some indoor firing range. And also there is a site plan and some engineering to just reconfigure the current site, which is not a good site, being in a valley that amplifies the noise of, of the gunfire, but to reconfigure it to, to decrease it somewhat. And that also, again, just to acknowledge what the, the neighborhoods have had to go through, you know, we didn't used to put on three recruiting classes a year, and we'd really moved to quite a bit more training in the last four or five years. And that has resulted in a much heavier schedule of use at that facility so that people really feel that it's unpredictable. So it's fairly constant or consistent and it's also kind of unpredictable. They never know when it's coming. There's no set schedule where they can plan their lives around or even be ready for the, the kind of, the amount of sound that's going to be impacting them. So again, I'm, I'm happy to support today. I think Councilman Kraus and I also had a productive but exchange over the weekend about, you know, what is happening with this kind of trend in cities to create these large compound facilities, as it were? And since there are other cities, some that are having a lot of public discussion about building them, Atlanta especially, has a highly contentious proposal. Citizens are rejecting the idea of creating what they're calling in Atlanta Cop City. I think it's time, and, but I, I did, you know, some research over the weekend and I found quite a few places that did move forward with these large expensive public training facilities. And so I think it's, there's enough where we can see what is the result? Has it been positive results on, you know, those, that city's public safety and the results that they're getting or not? And so that's one advantage of, of other cities having moved forward with these and, and completed them. But anyway, I'm happy to support today and I do think that I'm, I, you know, I'm happy to continue the conversation with other members about the, the project at large. Thank you.
Thank you. President Smith?
Thank you, and I just want to thank Councilman Kraus for doing his due diligence in recommitting this so we can actually have a conversation, more in-depth conversation. And I'm glad that the Director is here. And I just want to thank you for your conversation last night. I think we've been discussing the safety of the city of Pittsburgh as a whole and what needs to happen, what needs to, what we need to do. And while I understand moving these dollars now, and I don't want to lose these dollars, so I think it's, if you really are committed to the safety facility, it's important to move the dollars now so that we can do this in the future with, with additional funds. So, but I do want to say that I think everything that we do, we should be looking at, at the lens of how we can reduce the, the violent crimes in the city of Pittsburgh. It is getting unbelievably dangerous out there for everyone, including our officers. And the South Side, you know, is pulling officers, you and I had this discussion yesterday, from all over the city, we're not able to open certain pools because of the, the violence in some of the, some of the areas. And I mean, it is to the point where we are making very difficult decisions, and this is, is not even a difficult one. This is, if you want to do in the future, let's put the funding where we need to put it now, and in the future we can revisit this. I, you know, I, we talked about the importance of, I feel that there's an importance that we absolutely need to get a class on for the police because if you really care about kids in this commute, in this city, you've got to do more to keep them safe while we're transitioning to any other type of new community policing, any type of programming that might involve social services. You have to get people to live long enough to get to the social services. And in my district and other districts across the city, that's not happening. And I've even talked about how we've have people, so this is a longer conversation, but in, in terms of this, I think that it's important to say, everything we do going forward has to keep an eye on the safety of the public in general. But we definitely see the, the violence occurring in the city and we want to do something to stop it. And I was happy that the mayor's office understands or is also committed to the safety of the public, I mean tremendously. So I was happy to hear that he's at least willing to have some conversations about what needs to happen because everybody right now, it's all hands on deck, what can we do ourselves? And so I want to thank you for that and that conversation yesterday.
Any other members for discussion? Councilman Wilson?
Well, the, the North Side's always in competition with the East, it seems. So I would like to know that the Allegheny, at least the Allegheny Circle is going to be done before Penn Circle. I'm just joking.
I don't, I don't know the time, the two timelines, but both projects are advancing, so.
Yeah, I know, I'm just making a joke. Thanks.
Any other members? If not, I'll simply say that I will be willing to support Councilman Kraus this coming budget cycle when he looks to reallocate funding, but I also understand the importance of moving these dollars now, especially for pedestrian and traffic improvements directly to where we've invested millions into affordable housing. So I, so I understand both issues and am supportive. With that, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry. Second round, Councilman Kraus?
Thank you. I promise very briefly, you know, the South Side was mentioned a couple of times here, and I just want to say that at the invitation of Mayor Gani, myself and Bob Charland and Public Safety Director Schmidt and Chief of Staff Wheatley met yesterday for the first of what is, what are going to be ongoing meetings Tuesday morning at eight thirty to, to speak specifically to the progress that we're making, the plan and the progress that we're making in the South Side. And I just, I just want to add here that I was, in all sincerity, very pleasantly surprised, might not be the right word, at the grasp of the problem, of the problem that Mayor Gani already had and that he came in, he came in prepared. He had clearly done his homework, as did Chief of Staff Wheatley. And we had a very, very productive problem of the urgency and the immediacy of the problem and how to address that first and foremost, and then to ultimately peel that layer while, or that onion one layer at a time. But I just, I just want to put that out there for the comfort of, for my colleagues and for constituency and people at large, that, that meetings have been very, very productive. Mayor is coming to the South Side next Tuesday at six PM to the Market House for an open and public meeting regarding what's taking place in, in, as it relates to gun violence happening in the South Side neighborhood. And I wasn't going to put that out, but I understand media already has that and they've already are talking about it. So he will be present in South Side, six o'clock Tuesday, the, forgive me, Tuesday the fourteenth at the Market House. But, but just as it relates to the conversation that we've had today, I just wanted to, to assure and to calm constituency that very active, very active conversation and action is, is happening. And I'm, I'm very, very, very excited by it. So thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no further, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation? Mr. Pollak, if you would stay with us, I'm going to continue, go out of order to page five, and we're going to take Bill 431, which is under the Public Safety Services Committee.
Bill 431, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a professional services agreement or agreements with Matrix Consulting Group in order to conduct a staffing and utilization study of the city's Bureau of Police at an overall cost of the city not to exceed $180,000.
Motion approved, discussion?
I can.
I know that Councilmember Kraus has some questions about the budget process here, so I will pass it off to Councilmember Kraus.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Councilmen. Director, I, I believe there, there may very well be desire to recommit by conversations that our Public Safety Chair, Corey O'Connor, had this morning, but I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions and perhaps have you or whoever comes to council to be a little more prepared to, to, to respond. The, the, if I understand correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the $180,000 for this contract is not in the, in the 2022 budget?
No, that, that is incorrect. These funds were budgeted by council last year. And so, so these are, this is a, was a planned and budgeted exercise. And, and I, just on that note, the purpose of the study is to provide information that will be material in bargaining. So we are seeking to move the, advance this process now as we head into collective bargaining. This is actually, it is supported by the union that we conduct a study as well to play a role in that process. And, but, but this was, this was an anticipated and budgeted expense because it is, because it is relevant to and intimately related to the bargaining process, which is a legal negotiation, it is eligible for a waiver of competitive process, which is, which is what was done in this case. And the firm, Matrix, is a, you know, nationally recognized leader in conducting these kinds of studies. They do them in, in cities across the, the United States. So that's the, I believe that that addresses the overall scope of some of the questioning. However, we're certainly happy for the, the resolution to be held for a week if, if that's what council desires, which is my understanding from conversation with the chair.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Director. So you, you kind of took the conversation bar, wanted to take it. You know, primary role of council is fiduciary and, you know, in managing the, and the budget. I, I just had concern, and forgive me for being misinformed, that many of us here on the, on the council lived through the, the bad days of Act 47, when the only, the only response we had for constituency was, no, we can't do that. And through the years of really very diligent and concerted effort to get our financial house in order over about a seventeen-year period and raise our bond rating and to make certain that our, you know, our capital budgets were pagow and, and to, you know, just keep our, our financial house in order, I just wanted to make certain that we remain, I know, and we all of us, I should speak with my colleagues as well, want to make certain that we remain on that health, on that pathway to financial health and, and safety. Nothing, nothing good happens if our financial house is not in order. So I appreciate you for correcting that. And I did want to ask a question around whether or not this did go out for competitive, because it came to council so quick. This is why I'm asking these questions, if it did go out for a competitive bid. But you explained how and why that would have been waived under this. We do have an established contract with, forgive me, Matrix Consulting. What about WMBE? That was waived as well? Is that not a requirement in, in this contract since we are already contracted with Matrix?
I'll double check, but I believe that to the extent that would be required here, which I believe it would, it would have also been waived, again, to access their national expertise in conducting these types of studies.
Okay, I appreciate that. Is the idea to come out of this study related to whether or not it, it would be feasible at this time to put a class on?
No, the two are completely unrelated. This is a long-term study that will, the results of which will play a role in, in the bargaining process as well as guide decisions in future budget years about, you know, whether certain positions are best filled by, administrative positions, to be clear, are best filled by a sworn officer versus civilian, things of that nature. So this, this in no way has bearing on a much more, you know, immediate dialogue about a, a training class. The, the, this, this study is not related to that and that will not be delayed while this, I mean, the, we're, we're not have to wait for the results of this study to have news on that front. I'll just note, to a point you made earlier, that there's a, in, in the discussion of the previous bills, there's a key linkage between training curriculum, as you yourself rightly pointed out, and a police class. And I, we're very close to having the sort of a pinned-down plan for that to share with council and the public, but, but because of those two items are so intimately related, that's, that's the internal work that's happening now in the department. But, but this study has nothing to do with, with that question.
Appreciate that. That's why we, we like to have open conversation like this to, to get at the meat of the matter and not speculation, but, you know, rather exactly what is, what is to take place. Because my first, my first reaction when I read the bill would have been, well, I don't think we need a study to tell us we need to put a class on. And I, I would, again, not to speak for my colleagues, but I would think that would probably be, you know, the majority of colleagues thinking along those lines as well, too. But I, I do appreciate a deeper, a deeper dive into staffing of, of the bureau and how to best deploy the bureau. So has Matrix done that for us in the past? And if so, if not, that's fine. And if, if you could maybe expand a little bit on what that might look like under contract?
Actually, Director Schmidt has joined us and if, with your permission, I'd like to, to throw that question to him. He probably has more knowledge.
Yeah. Good morning, Director Schrick. Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Yeah, so Matrix is a national company, as the Director mentioned. They have done major cities, New York, Los Angeles, Kansas City, multitude of other large cities, cities our size, much smaller than us, even local municipalities in the county. So they're very familiar with departments of all different sizes. So we feel they were a very qualified firm to utilize this study and they actually provide services for all of public safety. So they took, take a look at it for more than just the police lengthens, but also as we look into how things interact and engage and interface with police, what that looks like. As well as, you know, one thing we did ask them to take into account is all the special events that we have, you know, Heinz Field events.
Any chance?
I wasn't going to bring that up, but you did. Yeah, so all the events, we have to take that into consideration because that is an impact on our bureaus. So when we look at staff and we want to make sure we're looking at the true needs of the bureau as well as what we can do. I know we've had this discussion in the past that currently compared to other departments across the country, the number of civilian positions we have within the bureau is much lower ratio than most large, major, major city departments. So we're looking to have them evaluate that to see, make sure that we have officers doing police work and civilian doing civilian work, those kind of things.
We've had that conversation since the day I got here. We've been talking about some form of, again, to use an overused word, reimagining how we police, how we protect and serve. I do not want to use the term police, so how we protect and serve. So what, what makes this a little bit different? What, what's your hope for the outcome of, of this? What do you think the focus might be?
I think it'll be, so the, the last study that was done by, for the Police Bureau was in 2005. It was actually done by the National Association Chief of Police. So it was a very much, a firm that was very police-focused versus kind of overall public safety-focused. And also, obviously, we all know, all know the idea in staffing and recruitment for policing has changed significantly since 2005. So we wanted to use this as an updated study so that we can start to budget and, because I know we, we always talk about civilianization, but what's happened in previous years has been we request civilian positions, those get declined, but somehow we still added police positions without a study to really justify. justify the number. So at least from my standpoint, I would like to have the study to show whatever that number might be. It might be more officers, it might be where we are, whatever that looks like. So then when I come to council to ask for money, whether it's for civilians or whether it's for officers or for both, I have some justification and support of that. It's not just a thought process, or gut instinct, or whatever that somebody might have. We actually have some true documentation and true study to perform or to show that.
So, I'm sorry, Director, I would just add to your comment there, not limited to how many officers, but what type of officer? What is the matrix, I guess, to use their word, of the kind and type of officer we're looking for today in 2022 and beyond? Is that going to be a part of the focus of this?
Yeah, so part of the scope is to look how officers would interface with, like, OCHS, where we need to have officers in the right spaces, you know, do we need more officers in community engagement, move more officers into investigations, or where, this not just gives us a one number, this is how many officers we need, it is also where officers should be best utilized and can be best utilized to be the most effective for what the community, because they also will involve community, the FOP, public safety, council, mayor's office, everyone to kind of see what the needs and desires are of the community and what policing looks like in different places within the city. As we all know, that's, that can be very different.
So Director, will officer wellness be a part of the scope? Is there, is there a part of this that talks about the health, safety, welfare of the officer, which I believe is just such an integral component to their ability to function and do their jobs appropriately? But will that be? If not, that's okay. I just am curious.
Yeah, I absolutely, I do hope that's part of it, because one thing we want to do is try to reduce the amount of officer, the amount of hours that officers are forced to work, as far as overtime goes. When we have officers forced over and over again working so many hours, especially that, that's why I said we need to take special events into account. When we have, you know, parades and festivals and events, we want those, obviously, they're great for our city and they highlight our city, but a lot of those are, are on the backs of officers working overtime. Not necessarily wanting to or volunteering to work the overtime even, but just working the overtime and being forced to do so. We want to make sure they have a good work-life balance for their wellness, for this, you know, for the safety of the officers, as well as how they feel when they are interacting with the public. You don't want somebody that's been working 20 hours. We really don't have that often, but, you know, 16 hours even is, that's a long day for someone to be out there and engaging with someone and having to do what officers have to do.
Yeah. Just a little side note, I appreciate the flexibility of the Bureau and Public Works around our newly reorganized Pride. I know it was sort of the first year we really pulled this off, and there was a little bit of confusion around some of the deployment of it, but all departments were incredibly flexible, including the Bureau and Public Works. I just want to publicly recognize we appreciate your flexibility in, in helping us to get our legs in this new reorganized Pride that we're celebrating. But I think that, I think that is my, my questions. I'm happy to listen to other members, and I'm also happy to follow the lead of what other members wish to see with the bill, whether to pass today or to, to hold a wait for further discussion. And I'll, I'll leave the floor. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I have President Smith, followed by Councilman Burgess. You're good? So Councilman Burgess, then Councilwoman Gross.
So I've debated whether or not to begin this conversation, but I guess I cannot but have the conversation, since I keep hearing the same thing over and over again. And so I want to be clear. I have spent all of my career, whether vocally or privately, working with the police, working to reduce crime. It has always interested me, since I've been a member of council, and I have the most crime, I have the most homicides in my district, probably, other than Councilman Lavelle, of all the other council members combined. I've had more deaths since I've been a member of council in my district than all the other council, except for Councilman Lavelle, combined. Hundreds, scores of death regularly in my council district. It has interested me, and I support the police. I support them being highly paid and highly trained. It does interest me that we automatically assumed that police equal safety, when there's no data that says that. More police in my community is not going to make them safer. More police will not reduce crime in the council district I represent. And in fact, unless they are specifically trained and act in a very specific way, their presence will be counterproductive. The war on crime devastated the black community. It locked up my cousins, my family members, and my friends in a frenzy, and it has, it devastated the community. We spend $120 million a year on police. I usually don't say anything about it, but there is no ever any evaluation as to how that $120 million in any way directly contributes to crime reduction. Yet, if I spend $100,000 in prevention programs, there is three hours of conversation of how that $100,000 is spent on crime reduction, and not one single conversation. So in any other world, although I don't think this is true, if the police are responsible for crime and crime goes up, you would say the police were at fault. But what we say is, crime goes up, let's fund the police more. I'm not suggesting in any way, this is not a negative to the police. What I am saying is, we cannot do this business as usual. We can't just hire more police, throw them into the black community, raid black people, throw them in jail because it makes other people who don't live in my community feel better about themselves and feel that they're doing something. I want to be very clear to you about this. I'm, I'm, I don't know the right number of police, but I am going to tell you, if their tactics aren't right, if their procedures aren't right, their presence in my community is counterproductive. It will increase violence, and it will increase the trauma in my community, 100%. So as we go forward in this conversation, we need to have the smart conversation about policing and staffing, because in many ways, it's not their fault. We're asked to do a job. We, we declared war on drugs, and then we gave them assault rifles and tanks, and they did, and it was really the war on the black community is what we had. For many years, we had the war of the black community. Now, today, violence is increasing because of three reasons. Well, three reasons, violence occurs for three reasons. Poverty, institutional racism, hopelessness. Poverty, institutional racism, hopelessness. All three of them, none of them, the police can do. They cannot solve the root causes of violence. They simply deal with the symptoms of violence or the aftereffect. They do not deal with the root causes. And, and so we need, which is why I am very, I am, I was grateful to be part of the drafting, and I have the full, my full support for the Mayor Gani's Plan for Peace, which is a comprehensive and coordinated approach to violence. And I know, I understand, I understand the reflex to think that more police will make us safer. I get it. It's just not true. It's not true by data. There is no data that says it, nowhere. I've spent my life trying to think about this. More police by itself will not make us safer. There's only one way we're going to get safer, and that is when the community has confidence in the police and works with them as partners. The more that occurs, the safer we will become. And so, and so, and so we have to spend our time, we have to, so we need, we need police, right? If you take police out of a community, I'm leaving too, right? When I first, when I first had my first debate in council, I had a component, I had an opponent telling me, you know, telling me, you know, I don't want any police. I'm like, okay, let me know when that happens, right? You know, if there's no police, I'm not staying there. And so I want police, I support police. But I also think, and it's, I know this is hard, it's hard to have these conversations, right? We have, we have decades of racist policies that have impacted the black community, and so oftentimes, we operate on, on reflex, right? It's reflex. But, 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 but to really do this, and lastly, the uptake in violence is directly COVID-related, because if it was a Pittsburgh problem, it wouldn't be occurring in Philadelphia. If it was a Pittsburgh problem, it wouldn't be happening in Chicago. If it was a Pittsburgh problem, it wouldn't be happening in New York. If it was a Pittsburgh problem, it wouldn't be happening in LA. If it was a Pittsburgh problem, it wouldn't be happening in almost every urban center. But I think, we got to think about what happened during COVID, right? All the prevention programs were not there because the people were in the house. There weren't meetings. There wasn't outreach because the people were at home. And so maybe the opposite is true. Maybe the reason that the violence in our cities across the country have gotten worse is because all the prevention programs that brought the crime down was halted due to COVID. And in addition to that, they have now come back on the streets, and we have to now retool those weeks, those years of loss of education, loss of, of alternatives, loss of, of job training. All that years was lost, and now we have to restart that intervention on these at-risk populations. So this is, I, I know it's hard, and I try not to sound fussy, although I know I do. It's just, we spend, I've listened, you know, if there, I have, I have never seen the police ask for anything at this table that we've said no to, and I've never seen it debated, ever, ever. When they ask for guns, we say yes. If they ask for things, we say yes, whatever it is. And we spend a lot of our money on it. But we don't, we, when we spend prevention programs, then we don't ask the police for, I didn't say, you know, other than the legislation that I helped to, to form, we don't ask the police for receipts, or what did they do, or how did they do it, or show us exactly how you spent the money. In fact, the police has monies and funds that we don't control, that they can spend without our approval. Absolutely do, right? We know that. They have money outside of this council. I'm simply saying, we need to have a different thinking. We have to be consistent, that we treat all of our safety efforts in the same way, asking for the same level of accountability, the same level of investment, right? We want to invest in the police, we want to invest in the community, we want to invest in at-risk, at-risk use, we want to invest in those communities where the crime is occurring. We want all communities safe. We want every community safe, all of us, every, we want every community safe. Yeah, 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 yeah. And, you know, I have so many shootings in my district now, it's not on the news. You don't, you don't hear it, right? You don't see it. It's still there. I still have more shootings than anybody else. No matter what you see in the paper, my district still has more shootings than everybody else. It's just now, it's so, you're so used to hearing, they were shooting in front of my church, what, right in front of my church, a couple of days ago, right? My secretary was afraid to walk in the church. That wasn't on television, really. You don't hear about it. It's still there. I am, I have been hyperactive on this issue. I will continue to be hyperactive on this issue, and I won't have this, but now I think it's time for me to be a little clearer as we move forward, as, I'm proud, we have an African-American mayor. And so it is now time to have this very frank conversation about how the police engages African-American communities, and what level of police we actually need to be safe, and whether the money, and it may be, we need to spend $120 million, maybe, it may be we spend $180 million, maybe we need to spend $100 million, and the $20 million needs to go to different programming, right? I don't know. But that's the conversation we have to have in a very thoughtful, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be painful. It's a painful conversation, right? Because we spent the last 100 years of government saying, the police are great, they make it safe. But that's not true for black people. The police by themselves do not make us safe, right? They don't make us safe. They in fact have been the agents of destruction in our community. And we need to be honest about that, because we don't, you can't go forward unless you acknowledge the past, repair the trauma, and then move forward together to a shared vision. And so that's my, that's a long conversation I didn't mean to have now, but I, for the last, I hear these, these comments all the time, I don't usually react to it, but I guess I'm, I'm feeling something today. I, I'm tired, I'm, I guess I am glad that the city, that, I'm not glad, I am, I'm sorry that shooting is occurring in other council districts. It saddens me, and I pray for all those families, right? But at the same time, for me, this is my problem every day. From the day I took office to this day, this is the second thing in my district I'm concerned with. My first, certainly, the first thing I get is, believe it or not, is vacant lots and abandoned buildings. That's the first call I get. And the second one is violence. And I have done everything in my power to reduce, and will do everything in my power to reduce violence, but I'm, we, we need to do, it has to be thoughtful. And as I heard the public safety director, I'll get back to your bill, this is a part, am I not right, Director? This is a part of having that thoughtful conversation of how many police we need, where they should be, what they should be doing, what the civilian does, what the police do, what the programming do, does, how do we fit all this together? This is a part of having that puzzle conversation. And it's, it's going, it's a different conversation than we've ever had before, but that's the conversation. And so, and so I am not so sure to say, yes, we need a new class. I don't know if we need a new class. We may need a class, we may not need a new class. What we need is, is a very thoughtful approach to public safety, and that has to come before we decide, and that's what this does, right? That, this is in the linchpin to have that conversation. Am I, am I?
That's correct. I just, only, only a difference I would note is, the question of a class this year turns more on the number of eligible retirements and maintaining consistent level of deployment. So the way in which this would impact those decisions, I said, would be in a future conversation about future budget years. But, but I just went, with that one clarification, I would say you're absolutely correct, Reverend, that the, the purpose of this study is to guide the ideal number distribution and distribution of officers and the distribution between sworn officers and civilians working in the Police Bureau to achieve the objectives of the city and of the communities that we serve. So it is, it is to give us the necessary data to then have informed dialogue with the public, with this council, and with others about that. It's, it's necessary for us to, to, as, again, as Director Schmidt mentioned, we haven't done this since 2005. And so a lot has changed in the city since then, a lot has changed in policing since then. And so having updated guidance from which to operate is important.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Director Schmidt, I believe that you were here for the 2022 budget hearing on public safety, right, just in December. And so I'll remind members that we talked quite a bit that day about the organizational chart for public safety and especially the Bureau of Police. In fact, everyone knows and teases me about how much paper I keep in my office, because it is a little messy, but my staff was able to actually pull up my notes from that very day, from our last budget hearing, because we spent quite a bit of time on the org chart, which I have here. And I think you were in that conversation, were you not? Good, thank you.
Yes.
Right. And so I remember asking at length, because the organizational chart, again, is kind of broken down, I labeled it like A, B, and C. And I was asking, you know, which of these positions are about, you know, I You know, I, I kept looking for the vocabulary, like, we, we, members had been saying like boots on the ground or, or police on the street, um, during that conversation. And so we asked specifically, and it's basically the first two sections of the organizational chart, right? The, the investigations, which I've labeled kind of A for my own reference. And then what you have as Assistant Chief of Operations, which is really like command, when we, we talk about our commanders and our, um, our divisions, right? But then the third section, administration, um, has quite a bit of boxes, which really aren't boots on the ground. Am I recounting this accurately? I am old and it was six months ago.
No, that, that sounds, uh, very much what I recall as well.
Thank you. And so, um, we talked about kind of the proportion in Pittsburgh. And again, I'm using dated data, it's back from 2015 in Governing Magazine. Um, they compared across a hundred cities or so the number of employees in police departments for every city, right? City government, it's not regional, it's not county, so just city governments. But what was helpful in that conversation was it wasn't just total employees, there was another column for officers. And so what we generally do in my office is we pull out the fourteen benchmark cities or so um, that we are typically comparing ourselves to in the Post Gazette or Pittsburgh Quarterly. And it's curious that Pittsburgh is actually mid-range in the size of its police department in comparison to like Austin, Baltimore, St. Louis, Detroit, Indianapolis. St. Louis is much higher per capita, per ten thousand population. Uh, Baltimore and St. Louis both are much higher, uh, Milwaukee is much higher. So again, this is 2015 data, our force was smaller per capita than it is now, it's slightly higher now. Our population is lower and our police population is higher. And so this one says we had about thirty point nine employees per ten thousand people. And twenty eight point four per ten thousand are officers. And how close those two numbers are together, twenty eight point four to thirty point nine, is what is different here than in the other cities, right? So you've got something like Austin is twenty four point four employees in the police department for Austin, per ten thousand population, right? It's a much bigger city, but it's twenty four point four employees in the police department per capita. But only eighteen point six officers. So a much higher ratio in their department of civilians to officers. Um, and I think this is, am I wrong, what I heard you saying, this is the beginning research towards this contract, sir? Yes?
Correct, that's part of, uh, part of the study will be to look at the civilian positions or which positions in the bureau could be, uh, better served by a civilian so than that officer, that could be another officer, as you mentioned, boots on the ground or out, you know, doing police work versus, uh, desk work or budget work.
Right, right. And it, again, just as a reminder, it, I think members were, especially Mr. Kraus was pointing out yesterday, it takes a full eighteen months to get a recruit to be an officer, right? And, and we spend, I, I've forgotten, someone has told us before, is it a hundred thousand dollars in training per officer? Is it more? Has anyone added it up before?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of difficult that, for officers, actually, we're trying to work through that actually.
Mm-hmm, aside, I, I assume that's above and beyond the facility costs. Maybe we could fold in the facility costs and it would be a more helpful number. But, and so if someone is a photographer, right, which is some of my chicken scratch from that day back in December. If someone is in the telephone unit, if someone is in wellness, or someone's in the record room, we really don't need to wait eighteen months to bring them on board, spend an extra hundred thousand dollars on officer training, right, in order to fill that position. And then if we did fill that position with a non-officer, we have someone that we did spend eighteen months and a hundred thousand dollars in training that could actually be in command or in investigations instead of at the desk, right? And so that, that was, I, that's how I'm recalling the nature of our, our conversation back in December. Do you remember that as well?
Yes, yeah.
Right, okay, so...
I would agree.
Right, and so I don't, I don't need to blurt out the point, I just said, we, we've, we've had this conversation a bit at council. Um, I think we started to kind of dig into this. Um, I'm totally supportive of this hundred and eighty thousand dollar allocation in order to help us better understand, this is at a, you know, a very beginner's level, what I just recounted, right? And so if this is a consultant that can get us to really dig into what is good for us to do here in Pittsburgh, I'm, I'm all for it. That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, President Smith.
No, I'm, I think everybody said more than enough, I'm ready to vote. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to know the deliverables and the, in the, um, the research that you're gonna do, what is this called? This is a...
Staffing study.
Yeah, the staffing study, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
The deliverables, like, you know, I looked at the, at the bill, I see a cover letter, two cover letters, but I don't see any like details of what is actually gonna occur.
Well, I mean, again, and if Director Schmidt wants to add to this, he certainly should. But in general, it, it is, um, as he articulated earlier, a set of recommendations about the number and distribution of officers.
That's it, that's the sole question?
Uh, no, the, the number and distribution of officers, uh, in different, uh, functions and geographic locations as well as the appropriate, uh, to, to Councilwoman Gross's point, uh, ratio of sworn officers to civilians in certain types of roles. I mean, that, that's the, the, the meat of the, the product. Director Schmidt, if you want to add anything to that, but that's the overarching objective and deliverable.
Yeah, so just quickly, um, the deliverables are basically detailed analysis of current work, patrol workload and staffing needs, shift configuration and assignment optimization and alternatives, deployment and staffing needs for specialized field resources, investigative workload, specialization and case management practices, support staffing functionality and organizational needs for every function. Um, those are kind of the highlights. We can also share the, the full statement of work with, uh, you all, if you don't have that.
Yeah, that'd be great, I'd like to see that, that, those bullet points. Um, what is the, the expertise of this group's, um, what's the expertise of this group in regards to co-response?
Uh, so they are familiar with co-response, they've actually done some studies around, uh, cities that initiated and transitioned to or are in the process based on their recommendations to a co-response system. So they do study, um, multiple cities, as I mentioned, um, around co-response. And that is actually written in the, in the scope as well, that they will review how our police and co-response.
Okay, I just want to make sure that was in the scope, but, um, yeah, it'd be great to have the, the scope. Thanks.
No further questions.
Thank you, any further discussion for members? If not, I do have...
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I, I don't think we need to hold at this point, everybody's got their questions done. But, but follow-up, sorry.
Uh, my, my question's simple. Um, if my memory serves me correctly, what this bill doesn't do is do the analysis of how many actual officers are needed to service our city. But we were, weren't we doing at some point a separate analysis to try to figure that, that out?
This, this analysis would include that.
Oh, it will?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that'll be very helpful.
And I believe what you're referring to there, Councilman, um, is that, that, that was probably the, the tenor of the conversation at budget time, when the funds for this study were placed in the budget, right? Because that would have been the high-level, um, deliverable discussed at that time. It's, it's since been refined as we've worked with the, the selected vendor to dig even deeper into the scope, but...
When we, I'm assuming we will, but just for clarity, when we get this, when we get this back, I'm assuming it'll have the rationale for how they came to the conclusion of this is how many officers you need based upon population, land mass, all that sort of stuff.
Yes, that's, I'll let Director Schmidt speak to that more specifically in terms of how it'll look. But yes, it won't, well, it will include the thinking behind the analysis.
Okay, I'm good then. All right, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, thank you. Were you here for any other bills?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you for being with us. Um, so that will take us to the beginning of our agenda, um, which is the Finance and Law Committee, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 378.
Bill 378, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Into a Professional Services Agreement with Block &amp; Associates LLC for Services Related to the Employment Matter for an Amount Not to Exceed $9,800.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Can we read Bills 396 and 397 together?
Sir, Bill 396, Resolution Further Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 855 Entitled, Adopting and Approving the 2012 Capitol Budget and the 2012-2017 Capitol Improvement Program by Transferring $1,000 Within District Four Neighborhood Needs from Brookline Memorial Park to Volunteers Field. Bill Number 397, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 718 Entitled, Providing for an Agreement or Use of Existing Agreements and/or Contracts or Use of Existing Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Four and Provided for the Payment of Costs by Transferring $1,000 Within Neighb, District Four Neighborhood Needs from Brookline Memorial Park to Volunteers Field.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, uh, Bill 407.
Bill 407, Resolution Authorizing the City to Accept a Payment of $30,000 from Prime Gov Solutions as Amicable Resolution of a Contract Dispute.
Motion to hold for executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Executive session will be held, Bill 408.
Bill 408, Resolution Providing for a Professional Services Agreement or Existing Agreements for Consultant Services, but not limited to auditing, accounting, and technical services for the City Controller's Office at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, need a motion to approve the invoices?
So move.
Second.
I'm not talking, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Invoices are approved. Uh, need a motion to approve the P-cards?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P-cards are approved. That takes us to Public Safety Services Committee, chaired by Councilman O'Connor. We have one recommitted bill, Bill 32.
Bill 32, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title I, Administrative Article III, Organization Chapter 116, Department of Public Safety, by adding a new section 116.17, Regulation of Pedestrian Stops by the Officers of the Bureau of Police.
Second.
Uh, I'll pass up, are we holding a week? I know there were amendments being discussed, so...
Mr. Chair?
All right, let's, uh, I think I saw three hands, we'll start with Councilman Kraus, since he's online.
Uh, I appreciate it, thank you very much, uh, permit interrogatory?
Yes.
Councilman Burgess?
Yes.
Morning, what do you, what do you think, two, two weeks to sort of go through the, the different suggestions being offered?
Well, um, I would suggest a process, if you do not mind, if you, what my opinion?
Yep.
So, um, when I interact with public safety and do these things with public safety, I do it usually in partnership with them, not sort of independent. There's sort of three, three lakes, because my goal is to, is to get something that, that all three entities can live with, right? Because the police sometimes are, are reticent to change. Uh, for example, in 2010, um, we did a number of things. Um, one bill took, I think, eighteen months for us to finally negotiate out and, um, with the police. Um, another, we brought the, the original Pittsburgh Initiative crime was modeled after the Cincinnati model. And we brought Cincinnati in and, um, they would not receive them at that time, I think 2010. Um, that model that Cincinnati had offered to the city, um, later became, um, imitated by the Dallas Police Department in their program. And a few, about a year or two ago, the Pittsburgh Police went and saw the Dallas model was based on the Cincinnati model. And the new model that the police now have adopted is based on the Dallas model, uh, which was based on the Cincinnati model, same thing, basically focused deterrent, crime mapping, the same stuff. So it took, what, fourteen years for, for, for the police to get to that place, which is okay. Um, I, I would suggest that we have a conversation, that we bring in the police and a group of council people to walk through these proposals, because I think when I looked at them, some of them have unintended consequences. I was trying to be very careful. So there's two ways to do this, and, um, one way is to walk through the proposals um, and see which one of them we can do now, knowing that our final product will be somewhat modest. And then over time, as the police get more comfortable, we can add in more teeth. So on the front end, my, my suggestion, Ms. Kraus, is for us to form a council committee along with the Public Safety Department to walk through these recommendations with Mr. Schmidt and police and see, um, between the two of us, um, with the three, you know, three legs of stories, the community, us and the police. But community has given us our suggestion, let's walk, let's together partner with the police and get their feedback. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, Councilman.
Okay, so let's, I think two weeks, at least, we need at least a two-week hold, maybe more, but at least a two-week hold to start to have the conversation.
So Councilman, if I may, uh, Madam Clerk, break is four weeks away, if I'm not mistaken.
July nineteenth.
July nineteenth, so five weeks away. Um, just, I just wanted to put that out there for consideration.
Counsel's recents.
When is it?
July nineteenth.
It's a, yeah, it's early this year, Councilman, um, and it is the sixteenth of July.
When's it over?
August, July nineteenth to August nineteenth.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, uh...
He's confused because someone's coming to work.
We usually take it off, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it really is around the scheduling of meetings and the amount of meetings we're required to have and those kinds of things. So I just, I didn't mean to go off track, just that, you know, two weeks would give us three weeks before break, if you're comfortable with that.
It's okay.
Good, I, I am happy to support that, uh, if other members are comfortable with that as well.
We, I, I think everyone's comfortable with the whole, Councilman, but there were, I think, a couple of other members wanted to just at least provide a comment before, before the whole, President Smith? You're good? President, uh, Councilwoman Gross, I see you're, you're good, okay. Um, I'll, I'll simply say I would, wouldn't mind participating with you, Councilman Burgess. Um, I did review, I, I looked at every recommendation that they provided. Some seemed somewhat impractical, and just in terms of day-to-day policing matters. But, so I had some concerns, but some also seemed very legitimate. Um, so with that, uh, Councilman O'Connor?
Motion to hold two weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill be held two weeks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Apologize, I have some things going on at the House here, I, I need to step away from the meeting. Uh, could I ask President Kelsmith to take my committee when it comes, please?
Sure.
Will do.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to register? Well, he went, he stepped away.
Um, yes, happy to, happy to register, I vote in all three many bills, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to new papers, Bill 409.
Um, Bill 409, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter Into Several Sponsorship Agreements for the Richard S. Caligari Great Race.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 410.
Bill 410, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter Into Sponsorship Agreements for the City's Independence Day Festival.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Public Works Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Coghill. Uh, one supplemental paper, Bill 428.
Bill 428, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure Bill 428, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the city to enter into a license agreement with Allegheny County to provide access to the city to detour bicycle trail facilities during certain city construction activities along McKee Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 394.
Bill 394, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for a Grant from the Southwestern Pennsylvania Commission's Livability Through Smart Transportation Program to Provide Funding for the West End Trolley Trail. The grant proposal includes an ask of $800,000 with a local match of $325,000 to come out of the West End Trolley Trail Fund for a total project cost of $1,125,000.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. Bill 395.
Bill 395, Resolution Providing for a Supplemental Agreement for Services Doing Construction with Trans Associates Engineering Consulting, Inc. for the CBD Signals Phase 4 Project. It'll cost not to exceed $2,419,451.39, an increase of $138,312.15 from the previously executed agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That takes us to Human Resources Committee, chaired by Counselman Kraus. We have one new paper, Bill 406.
Bill 406, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 828, which authorized the mayor and the director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service Commission to enter into an agreement with Connect Your Care LLC for services relating to the administration of the city's flexible spending account program by extending the existing contract for another year.
Motion to approve, no discussion. No discussion. Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, chaired by Counselman Wilson. One deferred paper, Bill 65.
Bill 65, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 863 Entitled "Adopting and Approving the 2019 CDBG Program by Transferring Remaining Funds From the James Street Step Reconstruction Project to the North Side Christian Health Center, $76,000 and Traffic Calming, $14,220.54."
Motion to amend. I'm sorry, motion to approve first, yeah.
Counselman Wilson?
Yes, I have a, I've been holding this bill for quite some time here for this specific reason, because I wasn't sure of, for us whether or not our, our, our staff could, or actually the process would be, would be good for, for this type of situation. And I want to thank the OMB, Officer OMB, and also the CWDG Office for working through this. The North Side Christian Health Center is in need of a new elevator. And I'm, you know, happy to, to know that we can support a federally funded, you know, health center like this. So that, so that, you know, specifically, I think we all have some, you know, of these health centers. I know there's the East End Health Center, North Side Health Center, where people can go and, and get healthcare for a reasonable cost, if not no cost at all. So I think it's, you know, a good process to, to take advantage of, especially that the, the city now can work with a, a local health center like this. I just want to make an amendment to the bill, 0065.
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Any opposed? Any further discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Affirmative recommendation. New papers, Bill 411.
Bill 411, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title 11 of the Code of Ordinances, the certain site known as the Troy Hill Firehouse, located at 1800 Ley Street in Troy Hill in the 24th Ward of the city.
Motion to hold for cablecast public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill will be held for a cablecast public hearing. That moves us to our Internal Government Affairs Committee, chaired by Counselwoman Gross. We begin with new papers, Bill 400.
Bill 400, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, entered to the publicly-owned properties in the 13th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as 2545 East Hills Drive, 2514 Park Hill Drive, and 2508 Park Hill Drive, Council District 9.
If the Chair is, would like, we could read all of the property transfer bills together. Madam Clerk, would you take us all the way through Bill 405?
Yep, wonderful.
Okay. Bill 401, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, entered to the publicly-owned properties in the 20th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Herschel Street, Weston Way, Haker Street, 922, 920, and 915 Elton Street and Fairview Avenue, Council District Number 2. Bill Number 402, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, entered to the publicly-owned properties in the 12th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, Meadow Street and Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 403, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, entered to the publicly-owned properties in the 26th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County, 243 and 247 Kennedy Avenue, Council District Number 1. Bill Number 404, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, entered to the publicly-owned property in the 12th Ward of the city, 639 Lincoln Avenue, Council District Number 9. Bill Number 405, Resolution Authorizing the URA to Acquire All the City's Right, Title, and Interest, if any, entered to the publicly-owned properties in the 5th Ward of the city designated in the deed registry office of Allegheny County as Wichita Way and 3348 Milwaukee Street, Council District 6.
Is that it?
That's it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All bills receive an affirmative recommendation. That exhausts our agenda for today. We do have meeting announcements. This afternoon at 1:30 PM, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 291 as relates to a conditional use application for the development of 306 Avenue. Speaker registration closes at 12 PM today. Next week, council will hold our regular and standing committee meetings on Tuesday, June 14th and Wednesday, June 15th, respectively. Speaker registration closes at 9 AM Tuesday and Wednesday mornings. Also next Thursday, June 16th, at 6 PM at the South Side Hall Senior Center at 12th and Bingham Streets, council will hold an in-person-only public hearing on the city's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. Registration closes at 3 PM, June 16th. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the City Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138 or email cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. Is there anything else from members? Counsel President Smith?
Thank you. I want to call for a post-agenda and a public hearing on Bill 0032 for the pedestrian stops.
Second.
Thank you. I did talk to Counselman Burgess.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The President will work with Madam Clerk to get that scheduled.
And with the.
And Reverend Burgess.
Reverend Burgess. And can I just, real briefly, I just... There was a lot, never mind. Never mind. There was a lot I wanted to say, never mind.
Anything else? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned.